I will get us started. It is six fifteen. I will call our work session to order of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, to review the Emerald Ash Borgh grant and forestry update, I will pass it to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Deputy Public Works Director here. And how long have you been in this team?
Um, what month is it?
So, about, yeah, about here?
Yeah, yep, five months.
An administrative aide analyst, I decided to say, Oliver Scott Cullser, and they're here to give a forestry update and also uh, give us an update on the E A B grant that they secured for almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Nice. Awesome. Um, thank you, City Manager Rodriguez, and Mayor and Councilmember, thanks for having us here tonight to uh, talk about the E A B grant and just provide a general forestry update. I think it might have been, it's might have been a few years since we've talked about forestry specifically at a work session, so. Um, we're here to answer any questions you might have. It's a hot topic with all the dying ash in town, so. I wanted to get started by just giving a brief overview of what E A B is. Um, for those that aren't familiar, I suspect many are. Um, Emerald Ash Borgh is a wood-boring pest that was discovered in southeast Michigan in two thousand and two. Um, it quickly moved into Minnesota and was found in Saint Paul in two thousand and nine, and it made its way down to Richfield in two thousand and sixteen. And since then, it's, E A B problem has grown exponentially, I would say, in Richfield. It's really bad right now. Outside of treating your ash tree, it's going to kill, going to kill it effectively, so. Um, it's, it's very topical right now. A lot of trees are past the point of no return in Richfield, uh, public trees and private trees, but um, it, it, it is important because many folks do have private trees that could be saved, uh, yet at this point. So anyways, as these numbers indicate, we've got about a little less than two thousand, uh, Boulevard ash still. Um, out of roughly twelve thousand trees, that's fifteen percent of our public tree inventory. That's a lot. That's our second, probably our second most common species outside of maple. Unfortunately, may, most maples don't have a pest that attacks them, so.
Yet.
Yet, yet, yeah. Hasn't evolved yet to kill maples. Um, and then a U of M, um, undergraduate study that was done in two thousand and ten, of which Chris Swanson was part of, um, estimated, there was five thousand private ash in Richfield at that time, so obviously a lot have been removed, but um, there's still, there's still plenty out there. And then these are just some D N R photos of what they actually look like. Uh, if you ever do see an actual, uh, Emerald Ash Borgh, capture it, because it's really rare to see them in person.
They're very, very, very small. Um, will fit on, on top of any, they're really very hard to see.
Um, on that note, uh, here's just a quick sampling. Um, this is our asset management system that we maintain with our G I S coordinator. Uh, this is filtered to show only ash trees. As you can see, they're widespread, uh, throughout town, and these are just Boulevard ash, I should be clear.
Hey, you just, what's, what's a G I S coordinator? What's that stand for?
Uh, geographic information systems, so. That's deeper into just public works as a whole, but that's how we do our asset management, you know? Street signs, fire hydrants, trees.
Can we track all the trees to this grid? I didn't know that.
We have all the Boulevard trees. We don't have a inventory of the park trees yet. It's something that we'd like to do with some. Um, this is just Boulevard trees.
Yep, and as you can see, like, Woodlake has plenty of ash trees, uh, but there's none flagged there, so. Um, so again, as you can see, this is a problem that's going to affect all corners of Richfield. Um, and then just briefly, this is a really cool photo that Joe Clark, City Forester, took last summer. Uh, this is a healthy-treated ash in the foreground. Um, it looks like a healthy tree should look. Um, and then in the back, uh, over that house in the middle, you can see that really frail-looking sorry excuse for an ash tree. That's an ash tree that is beyond saving, is infested with E A B, and will have to be removed if it already has it.
Yeah, this, this actual photo was taken a couple of years ago, and it really shows that if you do protect your trees, it will work. With those trees in, in that proximity to each other, you know, there's no reason that both of them should be living, other than the injections do work.
And another way to identify a dead ash tree, obviously, beyond the fact that it looks very dead, you'll see all these, um, flecking marks from, from woodpeckers and other birds. The woodpeckers and birds love to eat the larvae, unfortunately, um, so you get that external damage that becomes very obvious to the naked eye. Um, and one more picture of the same. Um, this one's less infested, but if you can kind of see, there's, there's these, uh, white stripes kind of up on the, on the upper limbs. Um, if you are out taking a walk with your family or your pets, and you start looking up into the canopy of
Some here.
Of these trees, you will notice how bad it is, and it is scary.
If it gets all the way down to the trunk, you'll start seeing large pieces of bark falling off also, and then there'll be some S-shaped galleries underneath where the actual larvae was, was feeding.
So what can we do to stop E A B from killing ash trees? Really, the only solution uh, at this point in time, based off the current science and what's available, would be to treat your tree with an insecticide. It's relatively affordable. I say relatively because three hundred bucks to me or you folks might be a lot of money to, uh, other, other people in Richfield, so. It's ten, about ten bucks per diameter inch, so you could treat a twenty-inch ash tree for, you know, a hundred eighty to two hundred fifty bucks. Um, in that cycle, uh, one treatment will last for two years at this point, because it's so rampant. Um, you don't want to necessarily extend to a three-year interval. You might, uh, lose a tree at that point. Um, and I think the science is out. Um, some people, some people think maybe once the ash food source, once they've killed all the vulnerable ash, the, the bugs might go away, but most people do not subscribe to that chain of thought, especially since
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that either. There's so many ash trees in this state. There's so many old sites. Um, it, it, this is going to be around for a long time until I think all the trees are gone. But the other caveat to the, to the insecticide treatments or the injection treatments is it's relatively new. It's not a new chemical, but it's, it's, it's a relatively new process, and it works now, but I don't know for how long. That's kind of where the studies are right now. Um, I, you know, I'm not an expert in insecticides or anything like that. I don't, I don't claim to be, but just from, like, looking at other tree diseases, Dutch elm and some other things, um, those treatments tend to work for a long period of time, then they might not, so it's, it's one of those balancing things you need to do. Property owners, you know, is this tree worth it? Um, in some cases, it isn't. Sometimes it's got a lot of storm damage, or it's leaning over your house, or, you know, that, that might be a good candidate to remove, and I say always replant the tree. Um, but if you, if it's a high-value ash tree that provides a ton of shade, absolutely, I would definitely be looking at injections.
Yeah, and it's, and, and, and the beetles themselves will, will fly, and right around this time of year when we reach a certain humidity level, um, they fly, but they're also, they're also transported by people moving, um, firewood around. They, they can live in that dead, deadened-down wood for a long time and emerge, so.
That's the number-one carrier of every tree disease is like, love firewood, take it from infected sites, and that's exactly how it showed up in Richfield.
From Wisconsin. So if you do go the treatment route, you're going to treat it every two years for life, effectively. That's what we're thinking at this point. Um, and then just shout out Tommy Simonti, one of our Public Works workers. There he is injecting a tree. That's a Boulevard tree, and then you will see trees that are treated for E A B. They'll have some variation of a ash tag like that.
Well, they'll have three tags.
Um, so what's the alternative treatment? It's largely removal. The tree will die. Um, and why is that concerning to, to us and to you all as, uh, elected officials in Richfield? It's, it's very expensive and a lot, there's not a public awareness um, that this is as bad of a problem as it is. Um, if you're one of the lucky ones that has an ash tree in your front yard, it can be rela, well, it can be cheaper to remove. Um, if you're one of the many folks with ash trees over your house or in your backyards, um, they actually sometimes have to be craned, craned over your house, and that can add up to ten or fifteen thousand dollars if there's one or two trees behind your house. Um, you're all well aware, there's a lot of, um, lower-income folks in town and people living on fixed incomes, and when they get hit with a a note from the City Forester that they have to have a tree removed, um, it's, it can break the budget, uh, tenfold. Um, and again, yeah, the, the city can, per city code, require private trees on private property, uh, be removed. Um, there's not much assistance out there, uh, from the state, the county, or the city, but one, one cool thing the city does is we allow folks to put that removal cost on their property taxes over a period of five years with a small interest charge. Um, so that way, instead of a five thousand dollar one-time bill, um, or putting that on your credit card, uh, you can spread it out in one thousand dollar increments, or I guess even five hundred dollar increments over, uh, by annual taxes.
I think I have one question, Councilmember Stoppel. Um, can you speak to, is it cheaper to remove it before it gets really badly infested? Does it get more expensive as it gets farther along?
That's what I'd, exa, yeah, that's exactly what I've been hearing from contractors. Once it's dead, it's dead wood, and it becomes more unpredictable. Um, it's tougher on equipment. Um, so everything I've heard from the contractors uh, that, that we, we work with a lot, that once it's completely dead, it's going to be, it's going to be more expensive. I don't know how more, how much more at this point, but they're, they're saying they're going to start quoting higher prices with trees that are completely dead.
So it's, would it be better to take it out early?
If you were going to remove it, if you, if that was your plan, it'd be, it'd be better to do it now. Or even, so, I mean, it's, it's a tough, when, when a completely dead ash tree, you're going to see that bark stripping and some T-shaped holes and some, um, bark actually falling off of the trunk. That means the whole thing's dead. Got a little bit like the picture, uh, we had before, that's still mostly alive. Um, so that, that wouldn't, you know, that, that's not completely, that, that wouldn't trigger that higher price, but if it's all the way down in the trunk, that's when it's going to get more.
Um, and again, just to wrap up this slide, so the special assessment is an opt-in, largely it's an opt-in, um, avenue for, for folks to try to mute that cost. Um, I would say because, because it's killing trees at an exponential rate, like, right now, uh, we, we would certify by assessment about fifteen to twenty trees annually. Uh, I guess we, I expect that number to go up.
Yeah, it's going to move.
Dramatically.
You'll see that, uh, upcoming council meeting, I believe we bring that.
October.
Yeah, in October.
That's, that's, um, nuisance assessments and seventy-seventh street, just that big assessment, uh, council meeting. So, um, we're always looking for alternate funding sources to help us, um, get a leg up on, on this stuff. Uh, we had noticed last summer, D N R was advertising, um, preparing for Emerald Ash Borgh grants. Uh, there's a one-six, one-point-six-million-dollar pool of money, uh, one hundred thousand dollars was the maximum amount they would grant to local agencies, so. We went for a hundred thousand dollars and, and we got it, uh, which was pretty exciting. It requires some matching funds from the city. Uh, these matching funds would be spent otherwise on removing ash anyways, so we thought it was a good use to, to make our money go a little further.
These, these matching funds are in our operating budget. It's uh, uh, black dirt for, so it's, it's something we've, we're already planning on doing.
Um, and there was a diff, a few different things you could use the grant for, but, um, we decided to propose we would remove, uh, and we would remove and replace two hundred ninety-four ash, and why is the number two ninety-four? It's just the way the math worked out when, when we kind of estimated how much it would cost. Um, and, and the D N R requires a one-to-one removal and replacement, so if we're removing a Boulevard ash in your front yard, we're going to put another tree there. We have to, otherwise, we won't be able to get that money reimbursed. Um, and their requests for proposals heavily weighted a few things. They scored them competitively. Um, the, the number one was, was public safety, and this gets to how these trees become so brittle and drop limbs on sidewalks, on cars, on houses. Um, and then it was also judged on its benefit to underserved populations, and they framed that as, um, you know, below the median income, so lower income and then also racially diverse parts of our communities, so. Framed the proposal in that light, and they directed us to tie it to M P C A's map of areas of concern for environmental justice. Uh, so this is a snapshot of Richfield. Um, as you can see, east and southeast Richfield are some of our, our lower-income and more diverse communities, so we tailored our grant proposal to focus on ash removals and replacements in those communities. But if you can imagine, here on this next map, it's going to show where we remove trees this winter. So those purple Xs are trees that our Public Works crews removed over the winter months in between snow events and other duties. Um, it was about, that's about two hundred individual ashes that were removed. Um, March, we hired a stump contractor to grind out the stumps. Our Public Works crews worked with the contractor and they site, following removal, uh, stump removal, and then our forester, our operations supervisor, myself, and Chris, um, selected a diverse variety of species, eighteen unique species that we have very low populations of in Richfield, um, to increase that diversity and hope that we never have this problem again. And we
I just wanted to add a little quick. Um, it was a really, really big deal that, that Scott got this grant from. Um, we don't have, we don't have the capacity for two, for two hundred and ninety-four trees. Um, we do for about two hundred. That's our normal, that's what we normally do. We took down two hundred and ninety-four with this project, but we still have like three hundred to take down, so. This is just for this project, but this really, really, really helped fill a gap for us with ability to, to plant the trees.
That's member Travon.
Is this just where you look for, for, um, for, for trees?
It's a, it's a little
Does that look like a random sampling of the city?
No, so it's, 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 so it's part of our total E A B program as a whole. Um, realistically, from Portland to the west, we've, we've done our injections, so those trees should be good for a couple of years. Um, this was on a year where we were going to either inject or remove, so we just worked our plan again. We looked at the, um, looked at the trees and, and did kind of a condition, um, assessment of them and, and just came up with roughly three hundred that we were going to remove, not treat, but again, then replant.
Just timing that we did get to the, that part of the city in time?
Exactly. It's, it's exactly, this, this would have been, this would have, actually, last year was the year that we injected the east side, and we skipped the trees that we were going to remove.
Councilmember Travon, I think I see where you're going with that. It's not to say that we neglected to care or inject trees on the east side the last few years. Um, our forester is working, so again, that's the density. Um, our forester, we have one forester. He's the only one that really has the authority to condemn these trees.
Yeah.
Um, and so he is working east to west, so if, if we could get a grant like this for the next seven or eight years, you're going to see a similar map like that across the city.
It's going to move just like our plan. Again, everything, every, excuse my misspoke, everything west, everything west of Portland was treated last year.
Treated but not removed, so we have treated, everything was equally treated, but then just
Yep.
there are just more dead or dying trees
Yep.
on the west. So thanks, thanks for clarifying that.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Like, as I'm just, uh, just to clarify, like, if money were unlimited, would the preference be to just cut down all remaining ash trees? Or is the goal, like, if they're doing well, like that example Boulevard tree in your picture, that you would deliberately delay it? Or I'm just confused how much is funding versus, like, trying to preserve E A B?
So, so the goal of our entire E A B program is to remain within current budget amounts. Um, we want to preserve as much tree canopy as we can and give those newer trees some time to grow. So it's kind of that balancing act, and in trying to, we're almost looking at it, like, almost block by block. You know, we've had, there's plenty of blocks that are all ash trees, and if we can, you know, let's say that's twelve ash trees, and if we can take six, move six, treat six, plant six new trees, give those new trees some time to give some kind of canopy before we go after the other ones.
Okay.
Ultimately, ultimately, we're, we're probably not going to have any ash trees left, but.
This next slide, I think, will also illustrate how we are working east to west. So this, these are the trees we were able to mark, remove, and get on this list. Um, the D N R's, the D R has very robust, unfortunately for us, uh, rec, grant requirements to get our money back. Um, so these are what we could do in a, in a reasonable timeline to get this project off the ground, get these trees in the ground by May. So we're going to do, because we only did two hundred, if you remember, we're going to aim for around three hundred. We're going to close out the grant with, um, removals we'll do this summer in between, uh, obviously, daily, daily, weekly duties of our crews. So this summer, we're going to keep, keep heading west and, and this would be the, that's more than a hundred, but, um, the next kind of wave of removals and replacements. And unfortunately, I mean, if, eight years from now, I might be showing you a map that is covered in colorful Xs, all the way to Edina. Um, so this is sort of my last slide on, on the, on the grant project, but I do want to highlight some other requirements. So there was a communications aspect of this grant. You all remember, you received a kind of a scary letter from us about check your trees for E A B, or it will die, and we sent out seventeen thousand of those last summer. Um, we're preparing another one to go out imminently here. Um, and then, but the, the grant required also some, well, frankly, it required a meeting with council to talk about the grant, which is why we're here today. Um, one of the reasons, I should say. It requires some social, so, social media communications. Um, the newsletter had a thing on E A B recently. Paratic social media posts this summer. Some current front-page article about the grant, so they really, they're really pushing us to kind of use, use this grant as a communications tool also by having cities promote it, so.
Senatorius, did you have a comment?
I have a question, actually. So originally, you said that if you treat the trees, that it works.
Mm-hmm.
But then you also said that eventually we're not going to have any more elm. So if you do treat your tree, and you treat it regularly every two years, but I, I understand that if the, 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 the border changes, what, you know, you can't control for that, do you have a chance of saving the tree?
There, there is a chance, but then you're, you're married to that program for the lifetime of that tree, you know? This is the, like, the only way that our urban forest is similar to Dutch elm trees. Um, every, every street in Richfield was elm trees. It was beautiful. Canopies, they were great. Um, there aren't very many left. There might be fifty left of American elm. Now, we planted some other varieties of elm, but that's the way, when I started here, when it comes, A B was all. Um, when I started here, it was all elm. Um, and, and there were some treatments, and it kind of works, but this is kind of that same thing, like, do you want to, do you want to maintain and treat that tree for the lifetime of that tree? But, you know, there's that cost-benefit analysis of it. Um, on our side, public works side, there's a time aspect to it. Um, the, the biggest thing that we're doing, or lessons we've learned from Dutch elm trees and now Emerald Ash Borgh, is we need to diversify the amount of, the type of trees we have, um, in our biggest thing we're doing.
That, sorry, uh, Councilmember.
It, and has there there been, have we, like, consulted with an ecologist or anybody in terms of what, like, uh, what a canopy that we would imagine would be, like, more resistant? Of course, we don't know what the future holds, but that maybe is historically was to the test of time. I remember, too, when I was growing up in Richfield, we had tons of willow trees.
Yeah.
And we lost basically almost all our willow trees through a couple of summers
Storms.
of really aggressive storms. Um, so I was just wondering if, if that was part of the analysis?
That it is, and then a lot of this stuff comes from, um, D N R, Department of A, um, and it's all recommendations from them. But through our whole process with this, we keep questions from them.
Grant required, they actually have an inventory. They do, um, it's like a random sample of, uh, survey respondents. You're not going to survey forty thousand people in Richfield to get your answers, so they, they do spot surveys and they come up with our, roughly, our distribution of tree species. Grant, with the grant, we had to tailor our list. They basically had to be trees we had no more than, like, three or four. Like, we had a, you could, there was a few we just were prohibited from planting. Um, did want to back up because I missed a key point. Specifically related to this. So if you see here, uh, the, how the R F P weighted, um, benefit to underserved populations in areas of concern for environmental justice. If you look at this, how many trees were removed in these, these areas, you're going to say, well, that's, like, isn't it backwards? You're, you're moving the trees from these neighborhoods that most need these trees. Um, but again, it was weighted on safety, and it was weighted on expediting the replacement of these dying, these dead-and-dying trees, um, because trees provide, obviously, shade benefits in the summer, which can cut, save money, um, obviously, the aesthetic value of just a neighborhood with trees, um, and also property values. I personally wouldn't really want to buy a house with no trees on it, or in a neighborhood with no trees on it. So while the pain is being felt now by these, by these communities, these neighborhoods, uh, we think, um, there'll be, there'll be a leg up on, on central and west Richfield in, in five or ten years' time when those trees have been immature. That's kind of the long-term logic of cutting down this many trees in one year.
Well, as of today, all of those trees have been removed, and new replacement trees have been planted, so the contractor just finished up. Um, they're a little different. It was another part of the grant requirement. They required one-inch caliber trees. We generally, with our program, have planted two to two-and-a-half inches, so they are smaller, but, um, Department of A, um, and other agencies have said that in five years, half-inch tree and a one-inch tree should be roughly the same size. Our first, first, first time we planted smaller trees in, in, up in, in our highs.
So you said these are all Boulevard trees? It doesn't have any of the park removal stuff?
Um, there was, there were some trees in Christian Park that were part of this, and there were some trees in the Wilson Pond area. Actually, more than some, there was like twenty-five trees in the Wilson Pond area that were.
Um, and just to kind of close out this dialogue about these grants, we're going to continue to fund these, these alternative sources of, of money. Um, I assume if they open the same grant project, um, and it's framed the same way, we'll pursue it, but if there's other communities that are in line for these funds and they have, they have competitive proposals, I suspect we'll be put at the back of the line. Um, again, it's one-point-six million, and we got a hundred thousand. I bet it was for the whole metro, so it's not a lot. But a hundred grand helps us.
Um, okay, so I just wanted to do a quick review of what, of the services that we provide, um, and how they may change because of Emerald Ash Borgh. Um, we do provide free inspection services. Um, that's one person, our forester's Joe Clark, and his phone has been ringing like crazy. Um, so the, the change this year, um, is going to be, we're going to kind of push residents to talk to contractors about their ash trees. As far as identification, is it dead, is it not? Um, we have a pretty extensive list on our website of contractors that we work with. Uh, we make sure they're all I S A certified, that they're insured. They all provide free estimates, and then just because of, um, the volume of calls that Joe is getting right now, uh, we're, we're going to start doing that, pushing it, pushing these people into contractors. Contractors that we have on our list all know about the assessment process, um, and, and that's, that's information we're still going to be pumping out to everybody. Um, it's, it's a pretty, it's, it's a great program. The contractors are on board. Um, it's, it's as seamless as it could be. Um, it gives just, you know, just a little bit of room.
Oh, yes, I can just mention, so when, if someone wants to go the assessment route, we encourage them to pursue their own quotes from at least three contractors, and then they, they, they choose a contractor and have that private tree removed, and basically, they bring the invoice to us at Public Works or mail it, and we pay it.
Very, very good point. Three estimates always. Uh, there's been such a variety in prices between contractors, and, and a lot of it's probably due to um, availability, so always three, always, always three estimates. Um, and then just our typical services with our, um, you know, our Boulevard tree program. It's one of those things, when we get new residents, they almost can't believe it's that we'll, we'll take care of that Boulevard tree, and, and um, they ask questions, can I trim it? Oh, don't worry about it. We'll, we'll take care of it. We'll write a work order, and you know, we'll, we'll take care of that tree along the Boulevard for the life of that tree. Um, it's, it's a great program, and it's a great service. There's a lot of cities getting out of it, and it kind of makes me feel a little leaky, to be honest with you, but, um, there's a huge benefit, and I still think there's a huge benefit to our roads by providing shade. It's one of the things that I think that has made our roads last longer, um, to just those, to keep the sun off of them, um, you know, the years when, when we had elm trees, and it was, it was shade on all of the roads, and it's, it's, it's one of the reasons. Not the reason, but one of the reasons that, that our roads have lasted so long. Um, yeah, again, replacement planting's, this, this project was huge for us, so we generally do, is that on the next slide?
Uh, yeah.
So we generally plant anywhere from a hundred and seventy to two hundred trees per year with our normal, uh, replanting program. The volume of, of removals, we're absolutely wondering what we could do. Um, and then we've, we've partnered with Tree Trust over the last couple of years. Uh, Mary, you were at an event at TAFT.
Amazing.
Yeah, or, like, how many trees did they plant, you know?
Fifty.
Fifty trees. That's great. And that park needed it. And we've had it in other, other parks too. Out of our EAB program, the parks are, have been the, the areas where we haven't been completely on top. Donaldson Park has a lot of trees that are gonna come down this summer. And EAB in general, just from me driving around and helping Joe out a little bit, I'm starting to see it everywhere. And we're gonna see it more so once we get the full leaf out, if it ever gets warmer. But I'm expecting probably two, three weeks, the, the ash trees should be at full leaf out, and we're gonna see a lot of trees about these. Starting to see the, I'm not starting to, I haven't seen it, the parks, streaking in the park, kind of all over the place. Not, not just east Richfield, just kind of everywhere. So it's gonna be a big, big summer for EAB. Last summer at Oxford Park last week, there's not that many ash trees there. But they're big. They're big and they provide shade, so. And this is the, this is the list of trees that we planted with the grant?
Not explicitly. We had to really tailor it down to meet the requirements, but in a normal year outside of the EAB grant, if we remove your boulevard tree, we'd offer to replace it with a new tree for you. And, and we modify this list depending on how many we end up with in town, so the density.
In two thousand eight, this list had like eight trees. So from two thousand eight till now, we've expanded that list just enormously. The only trees that were not planted on this list, and this came directly from a commission meeting that was great, I was at a joint sustainability, Ben, you were there, and, and Sustainability and, I mean, Service Commission meeting. And we were talking about trees, and they, they brought up the Japanese tree lilacs. It's a smaller ornamental tree that works in small spaces. We planted it for a while, and they brought it up that it's, has potential to escape areas in, in vast natural areas. So, from that discussion with them, we're no longer gonna plant that tree. We also talked about planting more native trees, and that's absolutely something that we'll be looking at in the future. A lot of these are like varieties of trees. A lot of them are from like improvements for less seeds or things like that, but their direction was more native trees. So, in the past, we've got like an autumn blaze maple. It's a cross between a red and a silver maple. And we might just go with a straight sugar maple at that point. So, it's, it's something that we're looking to build into our program in the future.
Question. So how does global warming affect the type of tree varieties and the needs? Is, and is, does it affect that, the success of these trees, and are we taking that into account? Are environment changes?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're looking at that every year, working with some of the nurseries we work with. There's gonna be trees that are, you know, that have only been in zones south of us that we're gonna be able to plant here. All of these trees are fine right now. I don't see any of these not being able to, to be planted here. But yeah, we're, we're looking to that and possibly expanding this. It's a thing. It's, it's gonna be a real thing.
For Heyford-Larry, thank you.
Yeah, question about this, and then just a quick comment, just 'cause we're running low on time. If, if people don't return this, there's no action taken and no replacement tree is planted, or do you just pick something? If I, if I had a tree removed and I get this letter and I throw it out, what happens?
So, I can answer that one.
Yeah, it's common.
It's, it's common. We, the problem we've had lately are people not returning the cards or saying they're adamant about, I don't want a tree. We're not gonna entertain those discussions anymore. We're gonna plant a tree on the boulevard. And what we do is we look at the block and try to pick a tree that's different than all the block. There's, there's a lot of, again, the ash example, or you might have a bunch of linden on that block. We'll probably try to put in a, maybe a Kentucky coffee tree.
Okay.
But we wanna try to, you know, diversify and then want the types of trees on, on pretty much a block-by-block view.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to say, and I think I'll just submit more detailed comments to staff, I just want the other councilors to be aware of it, and I mentioned it to you in the past. I continue to have concerns about where new trees are getting planted, that they're really inconsistent, they're really far back from the curb. I know I've heard lots of practical reasons of, of why that is happening. Out of curiosity and prepared for this, I went and measured all the trees on my own street, including ones that are planted in the same year, and it's just, it's all over the place. Some of them are four feet from the curb, some of them are ten and a half feet from the curb. Even in the same year, they vary by several feet. And I'm really concerned about that, I think most urgently, because this is even happening on streets where we anticipate building a sidewalk, like seventy-third street west of Lyndale. We're literally planting a tree now, although we may have to tear out in a few years, we actually have that sidewalk project funded. And I understand that it's hard to plan for every potential future, but it, it really drives me nuts to see sidewalk projects become potentially more disruptive and more damaging, more expensive, especially, again, roads where we anticipate that happening.
Yeah. It, you're right, and it's a little bit what type of tree. It's a little bit of what, how they've been planted in the past. A lot of these ash trees that we, elm are the same way, and they're right on top of the curb. And now we're, it breaks the curb, and now we have to repair the curb. But then when we repair the curb, you have to dig into the roots of the tree. So realistically, you're killing the tree and, and you're damaging curb at the same time. We're trying to find that honey hole. I, I understand exactly what you're saying. There isn't a lot of consistency. We're trying to use the balor, and we're trying to fill space in the air with canopy.
Yep.
That's kind of what, what we're trying to do. The other stuff, if it's a sidewalk, you know, I've had discussions in the past, and we, we did it on Lyndale, where you move the sidewalk around the tree. I, I mean, unless we're, we're absolutely looking for linear sidewalks, you know, I, you know, I don't know, but there, there are options.
Okay, but again, on streets, for example, that have existing sidewalks, you do make do with the space you have. Even on brand-new streets like Portland or sixty-six, we have this beautiful linear line of, of trees close to the curb. And again, I understand why that would be probably more expensive or more difficult to do that citywide, but it is better, and it functioned better as street trees. You talked about the beauty of the elms enclosing the street. We talked about how it keeps our streets shady. And right now, we're planting them like forty-eight feet tree to tree across the street. Just comparing that Minneapolis, it's about thirty-six feet, 'cause the street's a little bit narrow and much closer to the curb. But is it never gonna get that enclosure?
I kind of think we will, with, with, not, not everywhere, everything, but I think we will. The canopies with the bigger trees, they're gonna get, they're gonna get large, and that's kind of the intention. Weird, weird thing when we pick locations, we're kind of looking up. Like, what, you know, what, what part of the sky is this thing gonna fill in twenty, thirty years? And, and that's kind of more the, the view we've taken. I'm not saying we're right. I'm not saying that we can't change, but that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. And I just, to close out, 'cause again, I didn't realize this is kind of an aside. The biggest ask is like, on collector roads, on roads where our existing policy says to have a sidewalk, I really would like you to look hard at another way to approach that. I hate to see, and I even see like the seventy-third project by the elementary school is gonna be astronomically more expensive because we're moving curb to avoid trees, and we just can't afford to do that. And it's really worrisome to me. The other areas, I, I, there probably aren't ever gonna be sidewalks there. We don't know, whatever. It would be nice if they were consistent, even if they don't allow space for sidewalks. Wasn't always six feet back, and you at least got that consistency. That would be nice, but my number one concern is streets where we might, we have real plans to build a sidewalk to not make it more difficult.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, before I wrap this up, any last questions or comments from councilors? That's a member Whelan.
I was just gonna say, I had a different, it was a linden tree that was diseased on my boulevard, had to be taken out. We have a new crab apple tree, which was lovely, and the whole process, yeah, was incredibly smooth. And, yeah, so just the, the process works great. City staff were great to work with. Could you go back one slide? I was, do you ever, I didn't see any. Do we ever plant pine trees in the boulevard, and if not, why not?
We do. It's very special kind of location. There's sightline issues. You know, I, we, we haven't had a whole lot of success with them on the boulevard. We, we don't do it often. It's generally, I think what we've done in the past, if we did take a pine tree down, we'd probably put one back. But it's not a, it's not necessarily a shade tree. It's a pine tree. Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you so much to, to the both of you, to the whole Public Works staff for carrying something out like that in between the day-to-day work, in the middle of the winter, and the type and, and just difficulty of the work is, is a lot. And it's so important. We hear from our residents all the time about their concern and love for the trees and the canopy. Just, I wanna say thank you. Also, I think this is a one really, really good example. The city of Richfield is primed to get so much money from funding sources for so many different reasons, and as much as we can leverage that, the better. There's just, there, for so many reasons, given, you know, the community that we have, the diversity we have, the location, we're primed for these types of things, and I'm really thankful that, you know, you took the time to apply for that grant. And I hope that we see more and more of that, because honestly, I think we're a top contender in so many different grant opportunities. Right now is, is the time to take advantage of that, so thank you for going above and beyond in doing that, and, and hopefully we continue to see that grow in our other departments as well.
Thank you, and please pass on the thanks to Well, adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.